Um, Councilmember Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. Out of the abundance of caution, I'm recusing myself from items ten, twelve, and twenty-nine because my wife's employer has worked with organizations in these items.
All right, ten, twelve, and twenty-nine. Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, colleagues. Colleagues, today we have an opportunity to strengthen our commitment to co-governance. Right now, there are over four hundred thousand young people that attend one of over one thousand L.A. USD schools that are here in the city. Yet they have zero direct say in how their districts are drawn, and that needs to change. We, as we see with a lot of the protests outside, it's a lot of young people. They want, they're trying to find a way to tap in, they're trying to find a way to advocate for their community, and so we should be opening more doors for that. The motion before us instructs the Youth Development Department, in collaboration with the chief legislative analyst, L.A. USD, and committee-based organizations, to develop a framework for meaningful youth participation in the independent redistricting commission. We often speak about empowering young people, fostering civic engagement, and preparing the next generation of leaders. Well, this is our chance to turn those words into action. Let's make sure those engaged in youth and student spaces are a part of the process of bringing youth into this conversation. The redistricting process will shape the educational landscape for years to come, so we must do our due diligence to develop a structure that is reflective of the voices we seek to elevate. Let's take a step toward a more equitable redistricting process. I urge your eye vote on this. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you so much, councilmember. Seeing no other comments on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate to vote.
Fourteen ayes.
It's a distinct honor to introduce a man who has dedicated his life to equality, and that's Dr. Adrian Dove, special counsel to the White House on civil rights and social justice. In his role, Dr. Dove was instrumental in the creation of the Office of Minority Business, providing expert counsel on policies impacting racial equality and shaping initiatives designed to dismantle systematic discrimination. His contributions directly impacted the development of programs aimed at promoting equity and addressing the deep-seated challenges of racial injustice. Dr. Dove's understanding of King's legacy isn't just theoretical, it's deeply personal and forged in the crucial of direct action. He didn't just read about the struggle for equity, he lived it. His work has not only broadened our understanding of civil rights, but has also inspired and empowered a new generation of leaders to carry the torch of justice. Dr. Dove, today we thank you for your extraordinary contributions and unwavering dedication to building a more just and equitable world. We celebrate your remarkable career and wish you continued success. And we understand you're retiring this year after so many years, so we're excited about passing the torch, and we're really proud of the work that you have done.
This will be my third retirement. I retired from the federal government thirty years ago.
And he fought shoulder to shoulder with him to make a reality, make voting a reality for everyone. His work has contributed to creating an environment that is more inclusive, more just, and more representative of the people that it serves. When Governor Pat Brown saw his leadership after the Watts riots, Dr. Dove answered the call.
A public comment?
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Okay. Good morning, my name is Amalina Ramirez, and I work at McDonald's here in Los Angeles. I'm here to ask that you support the fast food work ordinance so that we can ensure every fast food worker knows their rights. For too long, my colleagues and I have been uninformed about our rights. At my job, we deal with several safety issues every day. Our walk-in freezer is often slippery and dangerous, and several of my workers have fallen or been locked into the freezer. We also don't have adequate stepstools, and we also deal with angry customers who threaten us with bodily harm just for doing our jobs. For the longest time, I didn't know we could do something about these issues until I learned about our rights. That's why we're asking you to put the fair work and fast food motion on the agenda so that we can protect ourselves. Thank you.
My name is Anisha Williams. I'm a fast food worker here in Los Angeles, and I'm here to support the fast food workers' ordinance. I'm a single mother of six. It's terrible how these bosses try to make you guys believe that they can't afford this, but they can. We're asking for sustained schedules. We need predictable scheduling, we need paid time off, and so on, things like that. I'm a homeless, working, single mother, working at a multimillion-dollar company, and they keep cutting my wages, they took me off the schedule. It's ridiculous what they are able to do. It's very depressing. Every time I wake up, I cry because I know that I have to go to work, and when I get off of work, I have nowhere to go. Thank you.
Hi, good morning, my name is Alejandro Aguilar Perez. Good morning to all you council meetings that are in front of me. I'm trying to reach out to all of you guys so you guys could help us with the ordinance that we're trying to get through. It helps us with fair schedules and particular schedules so we could set up our doctor's appointment around our schedule, as well as stopping the shortage of hours, which a thirty percent of our population is single mothers like me that are struggling for the shortage of hours, as much as personal training for us to know how to deal with customers that are under the influence of drugs, that do not know how to control themselves, that could put us in situations, a life with this situation that could really cost us our life while we're working. And pay sick days, that's all we're asking for right now. And to be honest with you, we really need this going on because some of us are working sixteen hours or thirty minutes per two weeks, and if that's not paying off, we don't got much money to pay off rents or anything like that, and we need sick pay days. That's what I'm asking for. Thank you.
Hola, buenos dias, mi nombre es Julieta Garcia.
Hi, good morning, my name is Julieta Garcia.
Estoy acá presente para un comentario público.
I'm here to give a public comment.
Es para exigirles a ustedes, tocarles el corazón para que aprueben en su agenda y sea pasada.
And it is to men, and hopefully gets to your heart, for you to be able to put on the agenda and eventually approve.
El proyecto que incluye tres aspectos fundamentales.
The project that includes three fundamental aspects.
Dentro de la industria de comida rápida.
Which are aspects within the fast food industry.
Que son horarios justos.
Which are fair hours.
Tiempo libre pagado.
Paid time off.
Entrenamiento para todos los trabajadores.
Training for all employees.
Yo les pregunto a cada uno de ustedes.
And I ask each and every one of you.
Si ustedes serían capaces de sobrevivir.
If you would be able to survive.
Con cuatro a siete horas de trabajo cada semana.
Off of just four to six hours of work a week.
Que es lo que está pasando cada trabajador.
And this is happening to each worker.
De la industria de comida rápida.
Each fast food worker.
De la misma manera, les pregunto a cada uno de ustedes.
And also, I ask each and every one of you.
Si serían capaces de trabajar.
If you would be able to work.
En donde su empleador cometa infracciones y quebrante la ley laboral, de cada uno de ustedes.
Where your employers are committing and violating labor laws at your workplace.
Los cincuenta mil trabajadores de Los Ángeles.
The four thousand workers in L.A.
Confiamos en ustedes para que nos apoyen.
Are depending on you to support them.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Before you start, it's time, just for everybody, the items that are open for public comment are items twenty-two through twenty-seven, twenty-nine through thirty-one, and item forty-three. Please begin with the items. Go ahead.
Twenty-two. First of all, thank you very much for your Google Translate, item number twenty-two. Gobseu sai ba'oh foh oh hei, gan san yo sap la ya ha ha kiu. Kai d'op de yap san ging zom kan diu, lai san mai de mai hiu. Ya gin b'jai lai san bi lai k'man ka b'hi su diu. Kiu yap san ga ma lai yo yam fui da ba shiu da zan yu. Da se yin ya yam lai mai le fong liu, gam ni chung sa zhi zhi g'au de tien hau. San san fu fu ba'oh yam da'oh ch'au mai zai ni san bi g'au. Item number twenty-three. La man ya ba yu ding zai ki zap bi fiu, ding o san mai la man de kiu au. Han za la man hei fa bi fa, o pa la man zai ding b'liu. Si bu si o man do ba jin da la man kiu ba fui bi liu. Si bu si o man zai sap sa kiu, la man hai lin ba'oh gi giu giu. Si bu si ki bi za ba fong shiu, sa bi zi o man fa lin yap diu. Ha bi zi o yap ding fau fau, ding gua ba jai yam la man shiu liu. Si bu si o man do ba jin da la man kiu ba fui bi liu. Item number twenty-five. Hyap sa fa shiu kiu, lai yu g'au yin biu. Sap du shiu fong shiu, lai kiu kiu lai man yu. Yap sai lai ya kiu, san mai dai mai shiu. San huan bi so diu, ba yap san da zan yu. Ya san ai sap biu fong liu. Li so li so o ba ki, ba ki chai zap si fu, so la o ai liu. Ya zan ma g'au ming, o mai yu so fong da lai ci. San gau so mo, ya bi san bu san fong hei. For the general public comment. Thank you very much for the Black History Month, and I just want to inform our council member, I am tired of being a prostitute on Figueroa Street. I want to go back to school, I want to go back to work, and then all those Figueroa people, all those gangster people, they cannot continue to bully my body. My body is my choice, that's Democrat's talking point. You cannot use my body without my consent.
Speaker, while general public comment is quite broad.
I want to talk about public safety in Figueroa Street. Figueroa Street is under the jurisdiction of the city, and I want to make sure that people like me, as a transgender prostitute, I cannot be the victim of sex crime anymore. I cannot be the next victim of the sex trafficking anymore. This is under the jurisdiction of the City of Los Angeles. Enough is enough. I cannot be raped again, I cannot be used my body without my consent anymore.
Speaker, your time has expired, and in all seriousness, if anybody is the victim of sex trafficking, I would encourage you to contact the appropriate authorities. The city does take that very seriously. So again, that goes for the previous speaker and anyone else.
Good morning, my name is Candace Vick. Marquise Harris Dawson, I voted for you, I'll never vote for you again. I live and I work in the Eighth District, you haven't done shit, and I'm really angry. I would like to know, where did the rent registry come from? I don't remember seeing it on any ballot. When did it start? What year? Where do the funds go that are collected from the homeowners, landlords, and corporations that paid the rent registry? And who decided for the additional just cost ordinance for the tenants? Fuck the tenants, they're tearing up our properties, and they have all these badass kids that don't know how to take care of, and I'm tired. Where do the funds go? I'd like to know. But guess what? I am going to get a campaign, and I'm going to make sure that your ass never gets back in office again, because you're not doing shit. Thank you.
So, item thirty is on Earth Day, a street banner campaign, and I just can't help but think about the consequences of people in office being drunk on power. Sadly, on this Earth Day, we will have to reflect upon the fact that yesterday marked the second occasion on which somebody from the council president's staff appeared to shove a reporter, in this case, a Channel Five reporter. I wonder if before Earth Day, we will see the city release the security footage from back there of this incident so we can see what happened, get to the bottom of it. With Earth Day, you know, we're faced with our climate crisis, Groat, and my favorite quote from Bob Blumenfield, I'll remind you, is, "Business as usual cannot exist, we have to fundamentally change the way we do things in this city so that we can grow back in a strong way." And I just think, for the sake of Earth Day, maybe we should get that charter of reform going. I want to correct their record. Yesterday, I said I made eight attempts with staff from CD-8 and the mayor's office in my efforts to avoid going there with Karen. Upon further review, it was actually ten. Really, I do question the political instincts being utilized here. The story just invites a certain billionaire to weigh in on another one of Karen's failures. What's done is done, and it seems like it might have knocked some sense in there, and that's even before the story drops. But I just think it validates that shame is the only thing that works with you people. And for my fellow chaos agent, I just wonder, maybe we should do what Mayor Reardon did. And the only way we could get around a council that refuses to reform itself is through the initiative process. That's the only reason we got charter reform in ninety-nine. So the more you fail and fuck around, more you're inclined to find out.
I'm a legal migrant to the United States. I'm here today to support the law enforcement officers, especially the ICE officers. What's been happening in this city is reprehensible, and the support of the city council members and Mayor Karen Bass is appalling for these criminals and doxing ICE agents. I'm here calling for President Trump and the DOJ to unleash the full force of the federal government on Mayor Karen Bass and city council members for funding NGOs and sponsoring these professional rioters and criminals.
Speaker, general public comment, while broad, is your opportunity to, is your opportunity to ask this council to do something?
Yeah, it is related to the council. Can you give me my time back, please? You stopped me, and it was twenty, it was twenty seconds.
So again, you were asking the President of the United States to do something, not this council, but...
Can you give me my time back, twenty seconds, please? When you interrupted me.
That's your time, next speaker.
Hello, today's Wednesday, February twenty-six, twenty-twenty-five, here at Los Angeles City Hall, on Two Hundred North Spring Street in Los Angeles, California, nine zero zero one two, in room three hundred forty, in the John Ferraro Council Chambers. In February twenty-twenty-five, the fire department has acknowledged of the hiccups or errors on the payroll that they did not receive, which is due to wage theft if people are not being paid. As a past Wreckin' Parks employees, I also indicated of the wage theft that was encountered on my paycheck since two thousand and two. As a counselor, I'm still waiting on your counselors who pass the bar on defining and giving me the definition of adjusting. Past employee myself, seven-six-two-six-six, I'm still experiencing defamation of character for speaking up, stalking, bullying, hate crimes, and whistleblower retaliation. Please email Chavez dot doc D R dot L L C at iCloud dot com.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
All items and general public comment, please.
So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Please begin with the items. Go ahead.
Thank you. On item thirty-one, this is the city acquiring property to create what is called Pacoima Lifestyle Center Acquisition Project. I would love to see more motions like this on our agendas. The city spends an insane amount of money leasing space for offices and events and stuff like that, when really, we should be owning it. So I think this is a worthy use of our money, and I appreciate that it's coming from discretionary funding. So I challenge all of the council members to find some property in their district they can acquire, and use their offices discretionary funding, and get that property. And if you can, operate your office's physical location out of that property. I know for CD four, the taxpayers are paying a lot of money to lease office space there, it just doesn't make any sense to funnel more taxpayer money into the hands of landlords. We're not getting a good bang for our buck. Let's buy more property. We also have a street banner campaign, thanks to Adrin and Marquise for Earth Day. It's good to make people aware of things like Earth Day, worthy cause, but what would be more impactful would be to actually crack down on making sure environmental regulations are abided by, don't give so many SEQA exemptions, and I would also challenge you in the coming weeks to take public transportation to work. I saw Miles from CD four on the train the other day. Hey, Miles. It would be great to see more of your staff and y'all taking public transportation, not only because of the emissions it would save, but then also you're getting a firsthand experience of what members of the public are dealing with when they ride the city's metro rail and buses. We have some REAP motions. I think you all know how I feel about REAP. I think it's kind of bullshit that when a landlord is derelict in their duties, they don't suffer any penalties. Once they fix the issue, they get all of the rent money back, and so the tenant has to deal with subpar conditions, but they still have to pay the full amount of rent. That's not how things work for most of us. When we don't do our jobs, we don't get paid, and I don't think it should be different for landlords. Item twenty-nine is a little over half a million dollars in funding for the New Economics for Women to provide services at the Van Nuys Family Resource Center. I looked into this organization, and it seems like they do some pretty good things. They help women start and maintain their businesses, they've developed some affordable housing, and that's great, but I wonder how much of this money could be better spent if it was just allocated directly to folks who need it, rather than funneling it through a 501(c)(3) with highly-paid administrators. What about utilities? I'm pretty sure some of this money is going to go into utilities for this organization's operations.
General public comment?
No matter how hard we try, you keep pushing us aside. How do we break through when we're talking to you? It's so sad the way you're behaving, political games you are playing. You always waste the people's time. It should be considered a crime. Oh, let's reinstate remote commenting. Do you care to hear what we say? Or are you trying to silence us? So, let's reinstate remote commenting so you can hear what the people say, even if they can't be here in person. Let's bring back telephone comment, y'all, and I would like everyone who's listening to go to YouTube and follow @RequestToSpeak. The title of their page is called "On Topic," but searching that won't get you there. It's @RequestToSpeak. It's a good conglomeration of things that happen here in city chambers, and shout-out Smokin' Scan.
I form the illegal test corrupt Dawson's Brown Act violations.
Which items would you like to speak to, Speaker? And feel free to move the mic if you need to.
Thank you. Items twenty-two through twenty-five, I had twenty-eight, but that's not allowable, right?
Okay, right, twenty-eight has been continued, so there'll be an opportunity in the future to speak to that. So you have three minutes for the items you mentioned, and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items. Go ahead.
Oh, twenty-nine, and also general public comment, okay. Items twenty-two through twenty-five are for the removal of private properties from the rent escrow account. I support these items because and so that indicted and on trial for pay-to-play and embezzlement schemes corrupt criminal current price and Dawson cannot place additional liens on the properties of these items for their developers and personal gain. In my opinion, the REAP account for these items and properties were targets of indicted criminal current price. In my opinion, the REAP funds collected from these citizens' properties should be returned to them or used for social services programs that would benefit the people of Los Angeles instead of lining the pockets of indicted on trial current prices and corrupt Dawson's developer buddies and the other corrupt politicians of this so-called council. In my opinion, wording should be added to these items that should set up a special audit procedure for the collected funds against council corruption and set procedures and programs that would benefit the property owners via payment into a property improvement fund. Further, in my opinion, current price should not be allowed to vote on these items unless the criminal is acquitted of all the pay-to-play and embezzlement charges he is currently on trial for. In my opinion, these items should have the following language added to them. All funds collected from these property owners will be returned to them along with all expenses associated with the liens placed on these properties by the corrupt city government. Item twenty-nine is for the addition of five hundred and forty-nine thousand to the contract of New Economics for Women Van Nuys Family Resource Center. In my opinion, these items should receive a no vote if indicted on trial criminal current price and corrupt Dawson are allowed to vote. This five hundred and forty-nine thousand item is yet another example of how all other communities are represented versus the Uncle Tom worthless self-serving corrupt members of the sleazy council represent the black community. Therefore, in my opinion, the dollar amount of this item should be doubled to address the fact that black women are only four percent of the population, but almost sixty percent of assaults, rapes, and violent crimes in Los Angeles. I am on my general public comment. The L.A. council is the most incompetent, incompetent, and corrupt local government in the history of U.S. Within just the last couple of years, Councilman Englander indicted and jailed Urney Martinez, Gil Cedillo, Kevin Leon Viton Leon ousted for insane racism and corruption. Eric Garcetti, deputy mayor, twelve years' sentence. Karen Bass, deputy mayor for public safety, current investigator for bomb threats. Current price indicted and currently on trial. Mark Ridley, Uncle Thomas indicted and convicted racist Asian John Lee.
General public comment?
Indicted by ethics commission. Jose Wezar convicted with thirteen years. Marquise Dawson is next. Sleazy, Marquise Dawson's credentials are as follows. CD eight is a food dessert, food desert, the city's highest incarceration rate, highest homeless rate, highest unemployment rate in the United States, and the little man has secured over ten million dollars in luxury offices for himself.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning. Agenda thirty and public comment.
I'm sorry, which items?
Thirty.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Please begin with the item.
Thank you much. So this is relative to the street banner campaign, awareness, Earth Day L.A., twenty-twenty-five, being coordinated by the Bureau of Sanitation, motion by Harris Dawson and Nazarian. Thank you so much for considering Earth Day. We here in South L.A., we don't have too much to look forward to when it comes to the environment. You know, smoke and liquor stores, dispensaries, and as they mentioned, Figueroa Street, it just fills the air, just like West L.A. does. So I'm asking you for Earth Day L.A., that the half a million dollars that's being paid for the parasitic vermin they call Stephen Soboroff, that's responsible for Nipsey Hussle's murder in twenty-nineteen, Ms. Karen Bass needs to reconsider that, if you're looking for a coordinator for the fire victims. So with the environment due to black folks in South L.A., again, I repeat, we are so grateful for the secondhand smoke that is often given to us in that area. So I hope District Nine and District Eight and District Ten can do a little better for that population.
General public comment?
General public comment. So I'm here to promote one of the prolific films, Put Down the Guns, Terry Carney, who's a native of South L.A. This is a film concerning gangs, as well as organizations and individuals who are affected by gun violence. I myself lost my son in two thousand and nine to gun violence, and that's how I figured out that where I lived in the hood, there was no resources to prevent these children from killing each other. So thanks again. I guess that's another Earth Day initiative. So today, we'll be at Victorville Valley Performing Arts at three P.M. For those who want to join, it is narrated by Ice T. This is four years and are making fifty-one awards. Take Down the Guns, Put Down the Guns, a world epidemic, check it out, and we're trying to do more screenings for South L.A., not only in the hood here, but in Memphis, Detroit, you know, Chi-town, where a high rate of gun violence is affecting our youth. So please check that out, Put Down the Guns, a world epidemic. I'm your friendly neighborhood policy analyst, Dr. Truth Bay, and I am not happy to be here. Blessings.
Good morning. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Please begin with the items. Go ahead.
Yes, DEI dog hire. So let's see here, twenty-two. Yeah, that's Almelda Padilla, giving out fucking rent, fucking protection to landlords. So today, we're on the side of the landlord. What is it with you schizophrenic cocksuckers? I don't know. And then number three, Bob Blubinblled, who showed up late. Yes, I'll shit on him, but I will support his item. And then Heather Hutt, who doesn't know how to run a fucking And then Heather Hutt, who doesn't know how to run a fucking Brown Act meeting, on number twenty-four. Fuck number twenty-four. It took too long for that person to get their rent back. And then we got Current Price, the indicted one. Let's give my hand for being indicted. That's right. And when you get a chance, everybody, uh, take a look at the old sneakers that, uh, Price is wearing. Think he's down to his last shoes.
So I'm gonna ask, this is your only warning. Please stick to the agenda items, or I'm gonna give you the general public comment.
Well, I'm on topic asshole. You're not. You're off topic. Then we have CD thirteen, Hugo Stollin, the no-good, dirty communist asshole, giving out rent protection to landlords today. Today, he's pro landlords. And then we got useless Kevin on a skirt, Gerardo doesn't do anything, just votes yes. And we want to thank Kevin DeLeon for number twenty-eight.
Which, item twenty-eight is not open for public comment. If you were listening earlier, it's been continued.
No, I don't, I never listen to you. You're worthless. Now, number twenty-nine, we have the, oh, Moni Cow on number, uh, twenty-nine. Let's give her a shout out. Yes, that's right. Big old fat Moni Cow got enough money to let it go forward. Five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to her little fat friend, Amelda Padilla, care of Moni Cow, cunt Regus, for something called Family Source Centers. There's no Family Source Centers. L.A. is anti-family. Didn't you know that? And then we have Earth Day. Fuck Earth Day. Fuck this planet. I didn't choose to be here. I didn't choose to be born here, you know, like a lot of you baby mamas, same way. And then CD seven again for a life center acquisition for Moni Cow, cunt Regus. Yes, and then finally, we have that forty-three, the so-called L.A. Alliance. This is a, a project of the city attorney, everybody. This is, we have a federal judge that actually has integrity across the street. His name is Judge David O. Carter. Let's give him a hand, everybody. Beautiful. That's right. Can't be bought, can't be blackmailed, goes home to his wife, doesn't take drugs. In other words, a perfect human being on forty-three to fuck this city over. Good.
General public comment?
For the general comment, did you see, everybody on TV, did you see poor Nethia yesterday on Channel Five talking about that lesbian fire chief of ours? What should we do? She went noodle 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 noodle, and as usual, has no idea. And then what about hamburger Hernandez not standing up for her fellow lesbian? How could you do it? Even though she's white, she still licks the same bush, and she should still have the same rights. I want the fire chief Crowley reinstated immediately with PACP. And what we want is Marquisi to resign, not the fire chief, because Marquisi was too lazy to get his fat ass out of that chair and take a dial-a-phone call, one eight hundred eight hundred L A F D, so he could have found out what was happening with the fire. Finally, everybody, take a look at Current Price. He's down to his old last pair of tennis shoes. Yeah, them lawyers are gonna bankrupt him. Too bad. Don't get in trouble.
Speaker, your time has expired.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, colleagues, let me start off by saying that I understand and support the intention of this motion. Uh, there was a time, uh, where land acknowledgements statements were important to not only show Native Americans how we recognize the history of events that happened as America expanded, uh, but to also hopefully educate citizens, uh, throughout this great nation of ours, that we did not arrive here without a price. But unfortunately now, these days, unfortunately, sometimes these land acknowledgements have become performative platitudes, and honestly, they don't address today's realities. Native Americans want opportunities, and so I think instead of doing things like this, I encourage us to create real partnerships that help address real issues like employment and actual education programs instead of just reminders. A land acknowledgement is one thing, but it doesn't have a tangible impact on the communities that we quote-unquote are showing respect to. I encourage us to take actual action that benefit groups instead of pushing things that serve to instead benefit how people perceive our politics. We should be doing things like encouraging LAOC to create programs that educate our kids on the history of the lands that they now live on. In my district, we opened up a new amphitheater that we named after the Sesavenga, the original name of the land that it's, that it was on. And to complement that action, we are also creating a program along with our tribal councils, local tribal councils that were introduced to three elementary schools closest to the new park to educate them on the history of the land that the new amphitheater sits on. And even beyond that, I've been working with the Fernandino Tatavium Tribal Council on an agreement to create employment opportunities for their youth to help maintain and beautify Council District Twelve. We need to show people, and especially Native Americans, that we are doing more than just talking. Sometimes when I hear land acknowledgements, they seem to benefit the person stating it rather than the people that they are recognizing. I know that this is going to pass, which is great, but I simply could not let this go without encouraging this body to do more than just say a few words at the start of every meeting. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you so much, uh, Mr. Lee. Well said, and, uh, hopefully well received. Um, let's open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Yes, the motion reads, "I hereby move that council adopt the following recommendations in order to effect settlement in the case entitled Bird Global Inc. et al. v. City of Los Angeles et al." "This matter arises from the bankruptcy of a dockless scooter company and the liabilities associated with the operation of the scooters on City of Los Angeles streets. Subject to the approval of the mayor, one, authorize the city attorney's office to expend up to nine hundred thousand dollars in settlement of the above entitled matter. Two, authorize the controller to transfer nine hundred thousand dollars from the liability claims fund, number one hundred slash fifty-nine, account number zero zero nine seven nine eight, miscellaneous liability payouts, to fund one hundred slash fifty-nine, account number zero zero nine seven nine seven, transportation liability payouts. Three, authorize the city attorney to draw demand from fund number one hundred slash fifty-nine, account number zero zero nine seven nine seven, transportation liability payouts as follows. Port Claims Trust in an amount up to nine hundred thousand dollars with the final amount to be directed by the city attorney. And four, authorize the city attorney or designee to make necessary technical adjustments subject to the approval of the city administrative officer, and authorize the controller to implement the instructions."
Okay.
And if I may, Mr. President, uh, the matter before council is to adopt Special Motion Two, Harris Dawson Yaroslavsky, as amended by Special Motion Two A, Yaroslavsky, head.
That, that matter, having now been posted, circulated, read into the record, is before us. Any colleague, any members wish to speak? Seeing no members on the queue, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tally the votes.
Five, twelve ayes.
Sir colleagues, any announcements? Besides announcing that traffic was terrible this morning? Took me two and a half hours to get here, but anyone have a more pleasant announcement? Seeing no announcements.